Evening, everyone. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas available in the file pockets near the entrance or on the City of Waterville's website. All items appearing on the consent agenda are routine in nature and are voted on in one motion and vote. All items listed under unfinished business or new business are voted on separately. On any agenda item, all councils will be given an opportunity for questions or comments. Then staff or citizens-
I can hear you, Claude.
What was that?
Council Frankie is asking if we can hear him. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Each citizen will be allowed one opportunity to speak, and we're limited to three minutes. Finally, council should be given another opportunity to speak or comment. Citizens who would like to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have an opportunity to do so on the community notes section of the agenda. Pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Conflict of interest? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to the presentation first quarter financial report.
Good evening. You should have received the information in your packet. I just want to run down through the memo, the highlighted areas. And so, the airport expenses and revenues were both over budgetary projections in the information. Both lines have been impacted by the increased fuel sales. So what we're overspending on the expense lines, we're recouping definitely on the revenue lines, and that's a good thing, I think, that the airport's busy. The code enforcement shows overages in some benefit lines with health insurance and taxes. These lines can be impacted when they are on new hires that select different benefit coverage amounts, and I think that is maybe due to the administrative assistant position that was hired for over there. It also experiences what I like to call the seasonal revenues, meaning that some of their costs are much higher during the construction and building season. And so, the quarterly average does not fairly represent the revenue budget during the first half of the year. The finance department is also subject to overages related to certain time of year. The first quarter, there was a sizable percentage of postage expended for tax billing. We only have that that one time. The registry of deed filings are also greater during the lien recording foreclosure process. So these budget lines should be fairly accurate at the end of the year. They should balance out. The revenue increases from additional motor vehicle registration numbers that have gone up, and that's why we have a strong showing there so far. Fire department shows some overages in overtime taxes, disability life. IT areas show overages in the technology assistance software, professional service line, and miscellaneous. That's because they make a lot of their payments for their software purchases early in the year for the whole year. And so those are also seasonally affected. PAX and RAC shows higher than projected spending in cleaning supplies, equipment maintenance, rental lines, utilities. They also are strongly impacted sometimes by the season. And so overall, the expenditures are closely anticipated. Revenues are on track. And I put on here the six-month analysis will provide more insight into the city's position. I'd be happy to answer additional questions. But overall, I think the finances are in good shape in this current year and on track with projections overall, so.
Anybody have questions for Christine?
Took us some time, but took us some time.
Thank you. If there's anything I can add to the report or that you would like reportings on, I'm going to, after working with the new city manager, Brian, and he would like me to come in person quarterly, and I just as soon be here in person to report. So if you speak with him about what you'd like to see, I'd be happy to get it for you. So, thank you.
You know, I just say, like, you know, I appreciate this document. I appreciated it in the finance committee meetings, and I appreciate it in this setting. It is so much easier to read and understand than anything that we've had previously. It does give us such a great snapshot of where we are at a very high level, which is good. And I do like, you know, all of the pieces and components that we've added to this and where we are with, you know, with the bonds and things of that nature. So fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So as Christina said, without objection, we're going to keep doing these quarterly. I think it's a great deal.
And all the attached documents that are part of the finance committee report will be available at those meetings, and they'll also be available as we go into budget. So you can see the financial position on all of the accounts, including investments, grants, and bonds, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the city manager's report.
All right. Thank you. First, Parade of Lights. Great success this year. Huge turnout. I really want to thank everyone involved in putting this event on. It was a really great story for the city and certainly a great story for showcasing our community beyond our borders. So thank you to everyone involved in this year's Parade of Lights.
Excuse me, Brian. Patty, Chad, no audio out in the world? Amy called her saying there's no audio being broadcast out. Step one.
Claude hears?
She's on Zoom.
Council Frankie, can you hear us on audio?
Sorry, Brian, that was a really good, I didn't mean to cut your eye, I'm sorry. Can you hear us now, Claude?
Yes, I can actually hear you.
We can't hear you, nobody can hear us.
Is that coming through your computer, Patty? Where did that come out of?
I can hear you, Claude.
It's okay. Only Patty can hear him.
Can you hear me now, Claude?
Someday we'll get it right.
Asking to say something again?
Claude, can you say something again?
Oh, you want me to keep talking? I can just keep talking and talking. You know, me, I can go on until you tell me to stop.
Okay, you can stop. Thank you.
All right. Are we squared away?
Yeah.
We've got a loop.
Amy's giving us the thumbs up, so we can continue.
I'm muted here.
You doing?
I don't know.
All right. Shall I continue?
I think you have to turn off.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, Patty?
No. Try now.
Yeah? Okay. All right, moving on.
Take two.
City notification system. The City of Waterville has partnered with Civic Rights to implement a mass notification solution. We're pretty excited about this. The city has created several categories the citizens can choose to be notified about. The city has created several categories that citizens can choose to be notified about, including city events, city hall announcements such as office closures, important due dates for taxes and dog licenses, election updates and notifications, events at Quarry Road, traffic advisories, road closures, updates on the Taconic Bridge project, trash and recycling, as well as holiday pickup schedules, and severe weather advisory. Citizens can choose what they want to be notified about and how they choose to be notified, by text, email, or voice calls. The notification system will be used in the event of emergencies also. The launch of this notification system is a large part of the city's effort to provide information to its citizens and visitors alike. So to sign up for this, for the notifications in any or all categories, please visit the city's website, waterville-me.gov, or you can go directly to this link, waterville-me.myfreealerts.com. So it's waterville-me.myfreealerts.com, so to sign up. So, and I'll be repeating this several more times, but please sign up. It's a great new notification system to get all kinds of information about the city, and we look forward to having some good enrollment there. An update on our unhoused neighbors in the Head of Falls encampment. We have approximately somewhere around, we had a meeting today with another update, somewhere around 12 to 15 individuals, but the number might be a little bit smaller actually currently still at the encampment. Our public safety staff, and I really want to thank them, our chiefs Bonnie and Essler, as well as some staff from the homeless shelter have been down there, meeting one-on-one with individuals to try to connect them with resources and connect them with services. It is, at this point, in our view, not safe for them to be out there in this weather. The goal is to get them housed and to get them connected with services. So I think we're making some good progress. We're having weekly meetings now hosted by the homeless shelter that are well-attended by all the community stakeholders and most of the community stakeholders. At this point, we hope to expand that group in the near future. So some good work happening here. The numbers are dwindling substantially, but again, the effort is to get everyone housed soon. Obviously, the weather has turned quite a bit colder. We're also going to be conducting trainings for volunteers to house our warming shelters. In this case, this facility could be used as a temporary shelter in severe weather events. So we are putting out a call for volunteers. We have a list so far of about 11 or 12 people who have already registered. Our public safety departments are going to be conducting trainings for these individuals. The first training is going to be this Saturday, December 9th, here at this facility. So again, we're putting out this call for volunteers. We need any and all hands on deck to help out with this. If you are interested in volunteering, please, you can either contact me or you can contact Teresa Crawford at the fire, yes, the fire department to register for the next available training session. The training is about five or six hours, just a one-day, one-time thing, and you can be trained and sort of certified to staff one of these warming shelters. So it's going to be a huge, a huge part for the community, and we encourage anyone who's interested to please register. We're also reviewing options for funding for a generator for this location to make it obviously a shelter space during power outages. Until we have that, this is not an all-the-time shelter. We need that generator. We are investigating with the county. They have some remaining ARPA dollars and how we can potentially apply there for funds. So more updates on that coming up. So bottom line, some good work happening here. The numbers are dwindling substantially at the encampment, and we're encouraging everyone to please, please get inside and please take us up on the offer of connecting with resources and some, and some help to get inside. So thank you to everyone involved there. A quick staffing update, but an exciting one. We have with us tonight, Michael Hall. He's our new community development specialist. He started last Friday. Excited to have him on board. We have lots of really exciting projects to work on. He comes to us as the executive director of the Augusta Downtown Alliance, so he's done a whole lot of community development-type work, certainly downtown work, grants, all sorts of those things. So Michael, welcome. We're glad to have you and excited to work with you. You may have seen in the media, North River Company has now closed on their financing to begin major renovations on the Lockwood Mill project. Really exciting. This is a $40 million project and another huge development in the revitalization and renaissance of Waterville. We'll also bring in quite a few units of affordable housing that's in walking distance to our downtown and all the foot traffic that will support retail also. So a huge project for the city, and we're excited to see them get their financing lined up and get going on some major renovations. I just want to give you a heads up. We're going to be, administration is going to be developing and implementing a city vehicle use policy, and this is just to serve as further guidance for city staff on the appropriate use of city vehicles and really just to make things clear, tighten up expectations, and to make sure city vehicles are being used properly. So that'll be coming from administration to all city staff. Lastly, my next session of city manager's open office hours will be December 18th. I'm changing the time from 3:30 to 5:30. It's going to be on the first floor, the Chef Art Center. Of course, all Waterville residents and local business owners are welcome and encouraged to attend to share their thoughts, views, concerns, complaints, or anything else you'd like to share with me. I am going to be, and I'm really interested in rotating these events around the city to different neighborhoods and also varying the times, because I know mid-afternoon or even late afternoon or early evening doesn't work for everyone. So we're going to be doing some evening sessions. Some in the afternoon, we're going to be trying to mix that up a little bit to make sure everyone has an opportunity to come. And I'm looking for ideas or suggestions in neighborhoods or little locations where this might be a good opportunity to meet some people and hear their thoughts. Thank you.
Any questions, Brian? All right. Council comments or committee reports? Go ahead, Claude.
All right, just very quickly, this Thursday, the Historic Preservation Committee is going to meet and will be discussing a possible historic preservation ordinance to be brought before council. Next Thursday, it's a week from this Thursday, the Comprehensive Plan Committee will meet to finalize our questionnaire about the, that we're going to be distributing to the public to get input on what the public thinks the comprehensive plan should include. Thank you.
Thank you, Claude. Tom?
So the Community Resiliency Committee met today, and we discussed the potential items that we'd like to put in a grant for the Community Resiliency Partnership, the Community Action Grant that they have. It's a $50,000 grant. Peter Howland, the superintendent of schools, was there, and we decided on three areas for that grant. We're hoping to submit for heat pumps that can go into the Alberta House School that will be able to both warm and cool, importantly, cool, though the communal spaces in that school. We've had missed school days because of heat in the Alberta House School. That school can also, that site can also act as a cooling center for people who need it in the, we talked about that possibility for the summer. The space is also used as a summer camp during the summer as well, so both heating and cooling. And that would be about $38,000 of the grant. We also talked, the two other sectors for, that are on the funding agendas for that grant would be some charging stations and the purchase of larger mature trees for planting that are, that would slot in to some development that's already happening downtown around Appleton Street and near the library and also on the Spring Street closure and renovation in front of, or not Spring Street, Silver Street, Silver Street Tavern. So we're optimistic about that grant. We approve those topics, and then they're going to draft it. I think her name's Granya from KB Cog is going to be drafting that with Bill Post, the assistant city manager. Hopefully, we'll have that submitted by, by March, by the deadline, but we're moving forward on that.
Anyone else? All right, moving on to public comments. Patty, anybody online?
No hands raised.
All right, moving on to consent agenda.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have to do a roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, yeah.
Council Gilli?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Clepack?
Yes.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council Morris?
Yes.
Council Frankie?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
Yes.
Vote of seven in favor and zero opposed. Is there a motion to read by title only?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to read by title only?
Second.
Shall I do a roll call?
Yes.
Council Gilli?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Clepack?
Yep.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council Morris?
Yes.
Council Frankie?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
Yes.
Vote of seven in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to old business. Order 183-2023.
Approve hanger lease with Advance LLC Lot 2.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Council Gilli?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Clepack?
Yes.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council Morris?
Yes.
Council Frankie?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
Yes.
Vote of seven in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to order 184-2023.
Move to adopt. Approve, sorry, approved hanger lease with Chris Tremblay, Lot 1C.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Council Gilli?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Clepack?
Yes.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council Morris?
Yes.
Council Frankie?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
Yes.
Vote of seven in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to order 189-2023.
Approve radio tower lease.
Move to adopt.
Second.
And this for the fire department emergency services, right? Any discussion? And this is costing us what? Nothing, right?
Zero.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Council Gilli?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Clepack?
Yes.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council Morris?
Yes.
Council Frankie?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
Yes.
Vote of seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right, moving on to ordinance 191-2023.
amend zoning ordinance 137 Water Street.
Move to adopt.
Second. Any discussion? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Council Gilli?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Clepack?
Yes.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council Morris?
Yes.
Council Frankie?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
Yes.
Vote of seven in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to new business. Resolution 195-2023.
authorize the city manager to extend fixed pricing contract for motor fuels and heating oil through Main Power Options, MPO, for the period December 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, so this is with, Main Power Options was a consortium for our energy pricing. So this just puts us back on the fiscal calendar year by this extension until June 30. You'll also notice that we have a much better price with diesel during this time. So those are kind of the two driving factors, directed schemes here also to answer any more detailed or further questions.
Is this a better deal than, wasn't KB Cog part reason we joined them to do stuff like this, to get better pros? I'm just...
It was another place to wait, like, to compare, but for certain things, they were going to be cheaper, but we don't use some of the stuff that they, but they've come in valuable for the stuff that Tom was trying to do with the different grants and stuff, so, I mean, it's sort of, good.
Yeah, I mean, I just, yeah. Not so much for fuel, counselor, right? The school is, has gone, is looking to go out to bid next year, but for other products than what we're interested in. So I think that, like, like the city manager said, this will put us back on the fiscal calendar, and they're, they're holding a fuel auction in April, so we'll be able to lock in our prices well ahead of the, you know, the July 1 date. So we're hoping for, you know, the best deal we can get.
How much is, how much has fuel cost come down in the last, like, 90 days? Has it changed much?
It has come down. Gasoline has come down in particular, yeah.
Any other questions?
Just to clarify, is this agreement currently in place, and we're just, we just want to extend it?
Extending, right.
Yeah, got it, thanks.
It's what we all budgeted for, our city departments and the school, so it's stable and consistent, right?
Roll call, Patty?
Council Gilli?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Clepack?
Yes.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council Morris?
Yes.
Council Frankie?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
Yes.
Vote of seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right, moving on to order 196-2023.
Accept the grant from Efficiency Main Trust.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Background.
So always happy to answer any questions, but this is especially exciting for us. It's a, it's a big upgrade, efficiency upgrade for us. I think I highlighted the bullets as best as I could. Energy savings, the biggest one for us is the, the man hours, the labor hours saved with this high-efficiency equipment and the early-season snowmaking capacity, which is really our trademark now. We've shown that with our volunteers and our staff out there. Again, this year, we opened on November 21st. Simplifies training and operation, super safe. Really happy that Efficiency Main, Efficiency Main actually reached out to us to let us know about this grant. So we'll split it, the total cost is roughly $43,000, and we'll split, you know, $10,000 roughly coming in from the grant, and then the remainder, the balance, will be split with the Friends of Quarry Road. So I think it's a fair deal all the way around. We're really hoping this goes through. We're anxious to order the, the equipment.
Nice. Any other questions?
If I may, I'd like to pass these things out real quick, and could I just touch on a couple highlights from Quarry Road?
Real quick.
Yeah. We've got our new Trail Mountain Guide. This is the Learn to Ski Program.
Oh, yeah. So great, great start to the year. Super proud of, like I said, the volunteers and staff that we have on at Quarry Road. They're dedicated and they're committed. They'll be making snow again tonight, extending the existing man-made trail that we have now, and of course, Mother Nature definitely gave us a boost earlier this week. We've exceeded our, our revenue numbers from all of last year already this year, which is amazing. We sold roughly a little over 500 season passes last year. This year, we're at 467, and here it is, what, December 5th? So of course, we did raise our rates for non-residents just a few months ago, and that, that has helped in this, but it's just been super busy out there. Really proud of Jeff Tucker, our program director, all the volunteers. Anxious to get the programs going with the Learn to Ski Club. This will be the fourth year for the Alpine Rope Toe, which is also exciting. We've made improvements to the hill. The hill will be lit this year. The Welcome Center is open now, so we're, we're in, we're in business at Quarry Road, and it'll be, it'll be great if we get some more, you know, storms so we can fully open all of the trails, because we've got a lot of trails that we want to show people, and over the last few years, really, it's just been the snowmaking loop. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I, my children are in that program. I volunteer as a, as a coach for the Silver, and my kids reported today at dinner that the snow was prime out there, that it is like perfect, excellent base, and then the snow that we just got dumped made it excellent, excellent conditions out there, so.
I just wanted to thank you and the Friends of Quarry Road for bringing forward this kind of project that, that shares costs. I think it's a great model, and yeah, it's working well, so, thank you.
And Will?
Thank you.
All right, roll call.
Council Gilli? Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepack?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to resolution 197-2023.
Refer to the planning board zoning map amendment 357 Park Street.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Now, obviously, there's plenty of discussion. Gilli, you want to get started?
I'd like to hear from any representatives from the church first before, uh, if that's, if that's possible, because I'd like to hear the thought process behind this.
I'm Steve Maynard, pastor of the church. We have now a church that's grown from eight people to over 200 people on Sunday morning with not a single handicap parking spot within a block of the church. People with walkers, amputees, people in wheelchairs, canes, cannot access the building. We have a ramp in the front on Elm Street, uh, but that is, uh, there's no parking anywhere close by that allows them to access that ramp in any reasonable capacity. So we have to do something, uh, to help them. The property was offered to us for sale, um, and we were not offered apartment buildings, we were offered two gutted vacant buildings. There's not a furnace in them, uh, there's not any, uh, fixtures of any kind, they've been completely emptied. They sit, um, 15 feet from the back wall of our church. Literally, the property abuts the wall of the church. And when I say about the wall of the church, I mean a church that sits on the historic register. We've been there since 1818. Uh, we're pretty familiar with how to handle historic buildings. Churches are very good at that, we've been doing that for a couple thousand years, uh, so we know how to continue to do that. So what we'd like to do, uh, is simply create handicap accessible, uh, parking with a handicap entrance, uh, to the back of the building so, uh, people could enter there. The property that we purchased, uh, aside from the exact footprints of the two vacant buildings are 100% macadam. They're all paved. There's not a green space anywhere on the property. So, uh, that, uh, property has been a parking lot for decades already. Uh, it was a funeral home, it's been a funeral home since, I think, the 1930s. Uh, three years ago, there was a contract made with the owner, uh, to change the zoning, uh, to allow for, I forgive me if I'm a beauty parlor, possibly, I think it also allows for some commercial space, uh, office space, uh, as well as apartments. Clearly, the church is not in a position to have a beauty spa, uh, and so we don't, we don't need that. So all we're asking for is to revert to the original zoning that was there for decades, just revert it back, we don't need that contract, we don't want that contract, has nothing to do with us. When you walk down Park Street, uh, you, there's a church, then you cross Park Place on the corner of Park Place and Park Street, it's a commercial building, it's an office building. The building next to that office building is a law firm. The building across from those buildings is a dental office. Uh, it's a long walk down Park Street before you hit anything residential at all. In the back of Park Place, on one side is the parking lot, a very large parking lot of the Methodist Church. On the opposite side of the street, same side that the church is on, uh, all of those properties are backed up by a laundromat and a large parking lot with two large apartment buildings. So it, we're literally surrounded, uh, by, uh, commercial space. Finally, uh, the church is commercially zoned. We sit as a commercial zone and so all the property that we own is contiguous to that. So we're just simply asking for, uh, you to allow us to show you a plan, uh, for the handicap access, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, oh, no, no, I was just listening, I, I have a question when you're done, but...
Yep.
So have you, um, spoken to the residents that live in the houses that are on the other side of Park Place, the ones that, uh, have voiced their concerns about this? Those are houses that directly face the, the current parking lot and the house that you're proposing to raise and, and extend into a parking? Have, have you spoken to those residents there?
No, the first we heard from them was their letter of complaint, uh, so they didn't, uh, come to ask us about that and we haven't had a chance to have a conversation. The very first communication we heard from them was their public letter of complaint written to you.
I see, and, and they did never approach you, nor you approached them?
No, no, because w- we hadn't owned it for more than a week or so.
I see.
But we would be more than happy to chat with them if they'd wanted to do that.
How long have you owned the building for? How long have you owned the apartment buildings? Because there's two of them, right?
There were two, yeah, there were two vacant buildings.
Yeah, but were they vacant when you bought them?
Yes. I, well, uh, with one exception, there was still one resident, uh, that moved out two weeks following the closing.
They moved out, uh, would, did they move out because they got served eviction paperwork?
There was no evictions, they bought a new home. Those apartments, uh, rented for $1,600 a month. There were five of them in total, uh, they were mostly vacant with that one exception when we bought it. We knew that when we bought it, that the, uh, the person that was occupying the apartment was in the process of buying a new home and they asked if they could remain there, um, and we allowed them to do that rent-free until they moved out, uh, which was a couple weeks ago now.
See, the thing is, you know, my concern is for the past, you know, I've been on the council for over a year now and the primary conversation that I've been a part of was the housing crisis in Waterville. And we have a church that has bought two apartment buildings that they want to raise into a parking lot and, and, you know, and that's, again, possible taxable, you know, income for the city. Now tax, tax exempt parking lots, I mean, it just, it's, for me, it's not a good look. I don't like it and, uh...
Can I ask you what percentage? Can I ask you what percentage of the five apartment buildings that, that existed prior to our purchase constitutes the building permits for new apartment buildings in Waterville currently? You just mentioned a $40 million project.
Yeah, there's a, there's a...
No, give me the percentage of the five, that you, the five $1,600 a month apartments that you're losing in the ratio of the new apartments that are approved for building right now.
It's a fraction, let's be honest.
It's less than a fraction, it's 200.
I think every building in Waterville, every housing unit counts, um, it's not just the big properties, um, we do, we, we need to work towards positive more housing, not less. So I, you know, I think, um, everyone on the council is concerned about that, um, and... but there are, there's also the, the concern about, um, the residents on Park Place and what expanding the parking lot will do to their, um, their property values and their quality of life. So I think that, um, it would be, since you haven't talked to them yet, I think having a conversation about, um, a compromise of some kind is in order here. I, I think that it's pretty hard for this council, it's hard for me, to approve a rezone to a residential, um, residential D in order that you can knock down a couple of buildings. So I would like to see further discussion about this and see if we can come to a, a solution that is going to work for all parties.
No, I appreciate, a couple points, um, when they, every house on Park Place, when they purchased it, they purchased it beside an existing parking lot and commercial space.
Yep.
It was already existing.
Agreed.
Uh, so the actual reduction of the two vacant buildings aren't actually going to increase parking very much at all, if much, because the duplex that sits 10 feet from the back wall, remember, we're going to build a handicap access there with handicap drop-off. So it's not really going to increase parking spaces, what it's going to increase is the potential of people who are physically challenged to be able to get into the building and not have to take a walk across Elm Street to do it. So that, that, the trade-off is, uh, if you, if you want a bad look, I think an exceedingly bad look is saying no to handicap, uh, parking. That's an exceedingly bad look.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
Just, just to, uh, understand what, what the future may hold in, in the, you know, future that you envision. You know, you have, you have, uh, a great product for sale here, uh, God is a compelling thing, you know, what, what's the secret of your success?
Yeah, we prefer to not think of him as a product, he's gone.
Sorry, him, her, what, what have you. So the question is, what is the secret of your success there? You talked about eight families to 200 or whatever those numbers were. It, is that a, a sign of more to come? What is going to be, what do you anticipate to be the traffic through, uh, that site? Have you reached a plateau? Why is there suddenly this, like, revelation in the population that this is the place to find, uh, yeah, spiritual enlightenment? What, what's going on there at the church?
I can't imagine anyone wants the answer to that, but, listen, uh, not to be cavalier about it, but people go to churches that they like to go to.
Sure.
And so if the residents of Waterville has, have decided that this is a church that's favorable to them, they're going to keep coming. Uh, they'll come to town council meetings too, they'll vote, they'll do everything that residents do because they have a tremendous interest in that building. Uh, what many people forget is that church founded Kobe College.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and so we have, uh, tremendous historical precedence here. It is the oldest public building in Waterville. And as the oldest public building in Waterville, I think it's imperative that that, uh, building has handicap parking.
No doubt with any of that, but to the point of my question...
Yeah, I understand the point of the question, but I can't make that kind of prediction. Uh, I'm, I'm tickled pink, uh, that it's grown from eight people to 200 people on Sunday morning. I'm tickled that we've been able to completely revitalize a historic building. We have already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in that building, uh, so we're showing our commitment by our spending. And would I prefer that that happened again in the next three years? Yes, I would. But how you accommodate that, uh, we, um, uh, the dentist allows us to use his parking space, Hannahford Brothers allows us to use it. Of course, you all are nice enough to help us with the library parking, so we're very actually grateful for that. It doesn't help with the handicap, but it helps us with everybody else. But if you come to church on Sunday morning, you know, uh, Park Street is just packed, getting up and down Park Street, uh, and so it becomes sort of untenable. So what you have to do, to answer your question more specifically, is if you're going to continue to grow in that way, you have to go to double services. Because you can't possibly accommodate that parking, uh, and so you'll have to have an eight o'clock service and a 10 o'clock or whatever.
And you, to be clear, you anticipate, uh, another doubling, so we're talking about 400 people now on a Sunday? Just to, like, a little realistic projection of what you're anticipating in terms of the flow through that site?
I, I, some of that comes by way of demographics. So for instance, you know, even though I was born and raised here, I spent my last 30 years in Philadelphia. Uh, and the church grew from 25 people to 1,200 people. There's sort of a bell curve to that and it's based on demographics and, and growth and things of that sort. I, I have a hard time seeing that Waterville could grow in that same way. But would it be realistic to see 400 people total sure? I think it would be. Over time.
No, 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 I get it, yeah, I just want to understand what, what we're looking at.
Yeah.
So, oh...
Go ahead.
Let's talk about parking for a minute.
Sure.
Because it's a topic that Waterville loves to talk about. How many more spaces do you anticipate getting, um, by, by removing the buildings?
Well, some of that depends on what you'll need for the handicap access. For instance, if we come off the back of the building, if you kind of picture that in your head, that will certainly extend into what you see there as the current duplex in order to build it to code. Furthermore, we don't just build the code, we build a historic, uh, precedence. So it has to look exactly like a colonial church. Uh, and so it will be more beautiful than you'll probably demand of us, uh, because that's precisely what we have to do with that kind of a building, we have an obligation to that. So if, if, if you do it that way and then what was formerly the funeral home with its parking, if that funeral home is removed and you allowed, um, and Houston will, will, will map this out, but if you would allow people to, uh, drive in and then be able to, uh, do drop-offs for, for the parking and for handicap there, you're not going to pick up spaces in that spot, you're just going to pick up ability to drop people off. So I think there's 20, there's 27 or so current spaces. People forget that there's painted spaces in between the buildings, uh, that, that are currently parking, so it's not just, uh, uh, the, the space that, uh, abuts, uh, Park Place. There's current park, parking between the buildings that have painted spaces and all that. I think we'll end up with 42 spaces total if we do it, you know, again, depending on what you need for that entrance to look like.
So how many, and how many more spaces would that be than what you have?
14.
Okay. So I, I do want to point out that we are looking at really, um, reforming our parking in the downtown too and we're going to need to, the downtown vision plan recommends shared parking and parking reform as essential to, um, to the, um, the healthy downtown. So I think it, this is part of a bigger discussion, um... Do you have any, um, oh, so I wanted to also ask about the building, the funeral, um, former funeral home is also a historic building, I understand.
It's not on the historic register.
Right, okay.
So I'm not, you know, we, the word historic is a value term.
Yeah.
But in order to be a historic building, you have to be on the register.
Okay.
And the only historic building in that area is ours.
It's quite old, though, right?
No, 1930s.
Oh, okay, I, I was misinformed then, I, I thought it was much older than that.
No. The church is 1818, that was built in the 30s and it was a funeral home, a commercial space for all those years until three years ago, when you allowed contract zoning and changed it, apparently to accommodate more commercial space.
Go ahead, I'm going to say something.
Let's get other people from the audience to...
I'm just, the building's been there, you said 1818?
Mm-hmm.
And...
Well, the church, I apologize.
The church?
It was finished, it was finished in 1826.
Okay, the church, it's been there since 1830, easy number. And all this time, they have not addressed handicap access to this building now? No, 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 I'm just saying, over this length of time, there's been no, no address of, this, this is similar to the fire we had last summer and the housing that, the building hasn't been brought up over time with sprinklers and things. We got no ha, no handicap access in one of the oldest buildings in the city and it's had things done to it over time.
Well...
I, I, I don't want to be the person to not tell you what to do with your property, it's yours.
We have handicap access in the front.
Okay.
And, and what we think we're doing is asking for increased compliance voluntarily.
But at the same time, I'm a here, as some of the others here are concerned, we're taking down, a church is taking down housing, okay? And a church is taking down tax revenue. Now, when they got the movie theater into a church, part of that package was that little strip mall where the Dairy Queen and everything? strip mall where the Dairy Queen and everything is, was part of the deal to get that done. They had to give up something to generate taxes. And if you had brought that before us with a little sweet...
I don't think that was actually how it was done.
I assure you, I followed it. It's, at the end of the day, to get them permission to get that place to be a church, something had to be compromised to generate taxes because they weren't going to give up 30-something acres to make it tax exempt on a main thoroughfare. Now, if you'd come to us and said, hey, we want to do this, but we're compromising to do this, and had a way to come up with some tax generator after the plan, that, I mean, I'm just saying you might have been helped if you had tweaked it a little bit.
Yeah, I think you're misinformed.
Go ahead.
I have one question for you. Here I am. So perhaps to the other councillor's point, is there any, so from my understanding, this actually is not about parking. This is about access for handicap. As, the way I'm...
The parking already exists.
No, I understand, yeah. I...
So we just want to have the handicap, that's all.
Yeah, and I understand that. Is there, from your perspective, is there any compromise that, so I don't have the site layout embedded in my mind, but there's two buildings. Is there any compromise that would enable you to retain some of the housing, but still gain the kind of access that would be appropriate for your needs? Is there any middle ground, is what I'm asking? Or is this one or the other?
Well, we're, I love the word compromise, but you're up, what you're up against are statutory inhibitions. The church is not, is a nonprofit entity. A nonprofit entity cannot, by way of compromise, be mandated to become a for-profit landlord. It can't be done.
Yeah, but, I mean, that notwithstanding, it does seem that, I mean, we're just talking about housing people here. And is there not some way that a church, it seems that a church certainly would be some sort of an entity that might be able to provide, through its resources, some kind of housing for people? Is there some way that that space could be used in that way? Or is that, is that untenable, given your needs of that site?
Well...
So, I mean, for profit, it doesn't, I'm not...
So, yeah, you would still be in a position, as a town council, of mandating the vision of a church, which I don't think is a position you want to be in. But we're not obviously opposed to helping people with housing. We do that all the time. But that particular piece of property is not anything but a vacant, gutted building. So in order to restore it, there would have to be a great deal of money to do that.
Yeah. So that's the issue I take. And I'm leaving, so I can be a little honest, because I'm out of here in a month. It is awful that we have been working hard, and you have to look at it from a councillor's perspective, they've been working extremely hard to figure out new ways and innovative ways to add housing. And then to see a building that was just rehabbed recently, and then now it's uninhabitable, where six months ago it wasn't uninhabitable. Six months ago, these were apartments that were $1,600 apiece. So although we're going to lose some housing, I'm also a realist, and I believe that at some point during a bunch of debate and negotiations, that you're going to end up with a parking lot. I think the biggest part that people want to look, don't want to look at your parking lot. I think that you're going to have to compromise to put bushes around the entire thing so people don't have to see it. I think those are some of the things that you'll have to figure out with your neighbors. These aren't buildings that we're going to be able to save. I think that it's awful that it was done the way that it was. Those were buildings that were habitable. I think that annoys people a little bit. It definitely annoys some of the councillors. It annoys me that that was done that way. It looked shady. Even though you didn't do it, the people that owned it before you dismantled those apartments to make them vacant, to give you what you needed. And then some people should have dotted some i's and crossed some t's to make sure that it could have happened the way that you wanted it to. This council and this city spends a lot of time rezoning things, making commercials own, a lot of thought and process went into that. And to undo that two or three years later, just to revert back to something else, is a waste of everybody's time. So I think that you guys should table this. I think that you should send it back. I think that the church and the residents should have a discussion. They should figure out a plan that is going to be a bitter pill for other people to swallow, but get what you want. Make it pretty so that you don't have to look at something disgusting. And it's not the church. The church, I have no issue with the church.
We're going to make it prettier than you'll demand.
I hope so. And I hope, and I hope that you bring that sort of enthusiasm...
We're in the beauty business. We're not in the...
Listening to the residents who live there and make sure that there is a compromise to be made. I don't think you're going to compromise on having units. You can definitely compromise on having a beautiful space that can be used.
Yeah, I agree.
And people should stop tearing down buildings that can actually be used.
Well, I think you might be talking to the wrong person for that.
What?
I just bought what was offered.
No, I get that. I'm not saying you. I just know how it looks on paper. It doesn't look pretty. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering if there's anyone from the neighborhood who would like to present a perspective? Yes, okay. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I think I know some of you. I am Bobby Lombrowski. I live at Three Park Place. I'm the person who resides behind the church who's going to have to look at this parking lot. Jay, I appreciate you for saying it as it is because it was a very shady situation. People were moving out of there. They were not happy that they were moving out of there. They did not want to move out of there. I've seen people moving stuff out of those buildings still in the past couple of weeks after they supposedly bought the buildings. The pavement, speaking about handicap issues, was not plowed today or not paved. People can't walk on the pavement. If they're worried about handicap people, how are they supposed to get around? We're, we don't mind the church. I moved here three years ago. I'm happy with, look, would I want a parking lot next to me? No, but that's what was there. Do I want a bigger parking lot next to me? No, it's, that's not a neighborhood. And I appreciate everyone for speaking up and saying what it is, because this is a really cruddy situation that really could have been taken care of another way. I went to the church supposedly unannounced, I don't know, that's like oxymoronic, how someone shows up to a church unannounced, to ask about what was going on with their neighbors. I was viewed as hostile and aggressive. I did go to try and start a conversation. That's how it was viewed. At this point, we are very willing to compromise and hear what they need. If they need handicap ramps, we want to support that. They have one. There's plenty of real estate on that building where they could put other handicap ramps. And just to be note, the handicap ramp in the front of the building is not historic. It's metal. It's ugly. It's modern. It does the job, but it's not historic. So I just wanted to say that we were here to compromise. We will work with them because, yes, we're probably going to lose those homes. It's just the way it is. And it really sucks because, you know what? A church should be keeping homes and saving, you know, that stuff. But thank you. I just need to say that. Oh, and there is another historic home in our neighborhood. Nancy Williams' home is on the Historic Register. It's historic. There is another historic home right here in our neighborhood. Thank you.
So that was a yes for bushes?
Told once. And thank you. I just heard from the pastor right before this meeting started that he's very interested in meeting with us, and I appreciate that very much. So you know I'm on the Housing Committee, and I'd love to see plenty of rental and affordable homes maintained in the city. I'm also a historic person, historic preservation person, and I do own a historic house, which is on the National Register. You'll have to come see it. And actually, the entire neighborhood is historic. The Reddington Funeral Home was built in 1868.
I apologize.
That's okay. We all have a few years.
It was a house private that was there. They haven't really...
And the bungalow was built in about 1935. Historic, I know that Claude is working on this for his committee, but historic does not have to be registered. Historic is a neighborhood, an area, a region, that has a common history to it with a story. And certainly, the Victorian region of the city around Veterans Park, which you probably all know did not start out as Veterans Park, it was a cemetery. And all of those bodies were moved elsewhere when, after the Civil War, the monument went in. And so the house across the street was there to watch that event. So I'm looking forward to discussions about the property. And I really hope that the next time you hear from the pastor, he will have more positive things to say about our neighborhood, because it sounded pretty awful. Thank you.
Can I, just a clarifying question. When was the property purchased by the church? October, just, I mean, I don't know. Twenty-six, okay. No, no, that's fine. Thank you.
So I would like to see the church and the neighborhood come together and talk about what would work as a compromise in that particular space, particularly with buffers around the parking lot, which is a part of the current contract zone. So I guess I'm looking for some indication from the parties that that is something that each side would like. And in that case, I would move to table this item until that discussion can happen.
Second.
But I do want to make sure that the parties are willing. Because I, you know, the conversation needs to happen, and it needs to be a good faith conversation.
I, prior to this meeting, Nancy and I had already exchanged emails to put that into process.
I'm looking for...
We can't hear you.
Okay, yeah, you have, you have to come up.
I mean, you're used to it, right?
That's right. No, prior to this meeting, Nancy and I have exchanged emails to try to put that into process already. So we want to have those discussions. We're going to have those discussions.
Okay, then I move that we table this discussion, this item, until that discussion has happened and we have some compromise. And actually, I will move to table it until the second meeting in January.
Second. All right.
All set?
Yep.
Counselor...
Oh. Wait a second. But this person has to speak to the tabling, though, right?
Very quick. My name is Jeff Allen. I'm with AE Hudson, the engineers representing the church. Would like to have that a little sooner, if possible, because we'd like to get on the agenda with the Planning Board for January 9th, I believe is their first meeting, either the 9th or the 23rd. So to keep the process moving forward, the second meeting in January would be on the 16th, is that?
Roughly around that.
Something like that. So that would, I'm just trying to keep this moving forward as quickly as I could. If we could have it discussed perhaps on the first meeting in January, that would be before the Planning Board meeting. So it could then be referred to the Planning Board meeting the next week.
Just for timing, the first meeting in January is the inauguration, or is it really just kind of a ceremonial meeting? So there won't be any actual business at the January 2nd meeting. There's also a 14-day notice period for the Planning Board. So just as far as timing, that's getting rather tight. We have one more meeting, obviously, in December for the council. So that's, I think that presents some obstacles to an accelerated timeline.
You can't do it. It's going to be the second meeting. Ask me the second.
Okay, thank you for your time.
All set?
Yep.
Counselor Gilli?
No.
Counselor DeBrito?
To table, yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yeah, I'll table it.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote is six in favor and one opposed.
Moving on to Resolution 198, 2023.
Approve recommendations from the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Advisory Committee for use of outside agency funds.
Move to adopt.
Second. Can you tell us who's getting what?
The committee recommendations to be funded from FY 2023, 2024 budget. Greater Waterville Area Food Bank, $5,000. KVCAP Educare, $10,000. Main Children's Home, $10,000. Starfish Village, $5,000. Waterville Area Soup Kitchen, $10,000. Waterville Community Land Trust, Kennebec Masalonski Trails, and South End Neighborhood Association, $2,500. Waterville Historical Society, $5,000. Windsor Community Cover, $2,500, totaling $50,000.
Any discussion?
I'll just thank all the people that applied. They were all worthy projects and really adding value to the city in different ways. But I'm really pleased that we could provide funding for all of the projects, so, thank you.
Go ahead, roll call.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Moving into Ordinance 199, 2023.
Amend the board's committees and commissions ordinance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Yeah, thank you. So this is largely to add the committee charges into ordinance. You'll see all the red language. There's also some other minor cleanups and some sunsetting committees that were due to sunset. Patty did a lot of work on this, so Patty, if you want to, if you have any other details you want to add, I know you and Sarah did a lot of work here.
Yep. Sarah Cross and I actually went through this ordinance. We had formalized the ordinance last year. It was a big project, so I'm not surprised that there are more tweaks that need to be made to it. I will say that adding the committee charges, formalizing those in the ordinance will be helpful, because there are a lot of different versions of those charges that it's difficult to tell sometimes which is the most recent version. And having them on the website will help folks in the community to be able to see those committee charges more easily. So I'm happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Anybody? Can I get a roll call?
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Can I get a move into a...
So moved.